Continuously replaced technology is needed.
So we will now have three librarians after we do this.
Yeah. So with the supplemental and concentration grant, so these are for the targeted students that need these additional services. We will be adding one and a half counselors. So a half counselor more for each middle school. A math coach, an English language arts coach, one half of a student service coordinator, student support service coordinator, one additional calendar day for certificated staff development, added on to the number of days they actually come to work. And that's ongoing. Continued, let me see, continued contribution to the federal title programs and the EIA because, as you know, the EIA funds are now in the supplemental and concentration grant funds. And then two part-time clerks to support the nurses.
So, did you forget one?
Additional slide funding. Did I? No, I don't think so.
Slide funding to support targeted students.
I don't think you said that one.
And so this all follows that LCAP. Everything here follows the LCAP. So this is what our budget year, which is the 1415, and the three multi-year out years for the multi-year projection, two of them are official and one we just do. And so here again, just to summarize it, you see the COLA that's being added. And up here, it's showing you the gap funding that we're putting into this multi-year projection. And here is our reserve spending.
Thank you.
So $2 million for next year. And then, as you can see, it goes two and a half, two and a half, two and a half, basically. Now, I want to let you know that if the state does fund at the 30.39% for 1516, instead of being a $2.6 million deficit spending. When we come to the financials, it's deficit spending. When we're talking about what we're spending it for, it's spending reserves for appropriate purposes. Okay, so this 2.6 million negative that's going to our fund balance would change into a $652,000 positive. Okay? Mind you, these years here haven't been negotiated. There's no negotiations that are included in this. So we always have to consider that. And then if they fund that 19.5% in this year, instead of the 8.4% we have, then this number, this two and a half million dollar loss, would turn into a $1.7 million gain. These are the funds that we would be using to negotiate with, frankly. And then this year here, the state doesn't say what they've got. So we put 8.4%, but we thought, okay, realistically, what would we be willing to use? And so we thought, well, we'll make it 20%. And that would bring us a $2.7 million increase as opposed to a $2.3 million loss. So we do have places to go, and the STIRS is included, that funding of the STIRS. So yes, this looks bad. This is going to happen probably this year. Okay? That's okay. These years, it's not like, this is not likely to happen. If it does happen, we still have reserves until we do get the funding. Now, as we go out, as you know, if the state, if the temporary taxes disappear, they may not be able to fund so much of the gap. But we can sustain this. We still have a fund balance, even though it's going down. Okay? That's based on really poor funding levels. And if the state does fund where they say, then around this, instead of 14 million, we'd go up to 17, we'd go up to 19 here, and we'd go up almost to 22 here, if we weren't doing any kind of negotiations. Now, we know that there's going to be this happy balance that we're going to be able to fund, what will work for the district, employees, the finances, everything to be able to sustain ourselves.
I'm sort of assuming there's other things that came up in our LCAP planning that we would have loved to have funded and haven't been able to yet, so we'll know what to do with extra money.
Yeah, yeah, right. There's lots of stuff we can do.
Exactly.
I'm not worried about that.
I mean, we've already done some research about what things would be priorities.
You get a whole person instead of half a person.
So, next steps. Well, I have to pass the budget before the end of this month, and we have to have the public hearing, which we had. And we had the public hearing for the LCAP, we had the public hearing for the proposed budget, which means that the next meeting, because everybody seems to be like on board here, you will have the ability to approve both the LCAP and approve the budget as well. So I would recommend doing that at the next meeting. And then the LCAP has to be approved before the budget is, and then it will go to the county, and they will review, they will either approve, conditionally approve or disapprove our budget by August 15th. The LCAP will now play a part of that. If they conditionally approve, then we'll have to make changes. They will look at all of our assumptions, and they will approve the LCAP first. And then after it's approved, and I see no reason why it wouldn't be, because we can sustain ourselves, and we will adjust our budget in accordance with what the state, the legislature actually passes.
What would it take to add sports back in?
I'm sorry?
What would it take to add sports back in? Because we have our deficit money.
Sports. Um, there's nothing specifically in here. It hasn't been brought into the LCAP. This budget follows the LCAP.
Okay. What, how does it affect, you know, how we have to, we have to approve the budget, and then when you submit it to the county, we either get categorized as positive, certified, or negative, correct?
That will be, the county will, and it'll be, we'll be positively certified.
It will, even though we're showing deficit or strategic use of reserve?
Because it's about our ability to actually pay the bills.
Because we will be able to pay it.
Our ability to meet our financial obligations in the current and subsequent two years, we will be able to meet them.
Right.
Yeah.
And matter of fact, we're kind of the poster kids there, because we do everything so conservatively.
So with this, the way that you presented, if we just give it to them like that, it'll still be positive?
Yes. Well, we give a lot of extra information. And they also are able to see how we calculated our LCFF funding.
Right.
So they'll be able to see, they'll look, and they'll immediately see that we're doing it at 7.8%.
And not the 28%.
Not the, yeah, the 30.39 and the 19.5. And so they will see that we're really calculating it conservatively. And by the way, that when we did the AB 1200 for our bargaining units, we, that AB 1200 was basically the same thing, because we took what we had at second interim at the time, and we included all the increases, and they, we didn't have the LCAP, some of the LCAP expenditures, but we also didn't have the revenues at a high level either. So they were able to see, you know, the direction we were going in, and they approved that too, because they know we're doing it conservatively.
All right.
Slide two, please.
Okay.
The STIRS and the PERS question again? So one of the, I think, for the out years and for those who are continuing on the board in the future, I think one of the increasing liabilities that we're going to have is funding the STIRS and PERS. So I think we're at 8.25 now for the PERS, and by 1718, we'll be at 14.3%, which is 173% increase in the next five-ish years. And I'm just wondering, our out years are baking those numbers in also, right?
Are.
The, are?
The out years in, yes, in the financials, they are all in there.
Okay, so they're all?
All those expenditures are in there. So there's an additional over, between the PERS and the STIRS combined, like for instance, this 1718 years, there, there's over $2 million more of expenditures just to cover the difference of what it would, what it would be today compared to then.
So it's safe to say on slide seven, then, since that's all baked in, and we're taking the lower of the contributions that the state's going to give us, these are super conservative numbers.
Yes.
Very nice. Thank you very much.
I just want to add, I think, so this budget is, we can look at it just for next year. So next year's budget was developed with the direction the board provided in terms of how much strategic use of reserve the board felt comfortable with. And so the additional services that are being restored, the additional, the compensation increases, the benefit increases, all of that was sort of taken into account to get to that target comfort number. And, you know, next January, we'll be able to see exactly how the state is anticipating funding education, and, you know, what might be available for expanded services. As Dr. Douglas mentioned, not everything that we wanted was funded this year. A lot of it was, not everything was. And also, you know, that I'm sure employees don't think that their compensation was adequately addressed. So I think that, you know, that those are considerations that need to take place next year, and it is a balance. You know, do we improve services and increase services? Do we do compensation increases? How much of each, one or the other, or both, you know? So I think those are conversations to be had beginning in January. And I think the LCAP process will not be as intensive next year. It'll be a LCAP light. And probably beginning in January, when we begin to get a sense of what the additional revenues might be for education.
All right. Another question, slide six, where the 2015-16 projected budget, so we're conservatively saying 7.8% of the gap will be funded.
Correct.
What if, I mean, what date will we know exactly how much they will?
About this time next year.
Around, all right, so?
When they pass the budget, we're still waiting to see if we're going to get the 28.06 is what the governor's saying now. If legislature does that, and they're likely to do that. And then the out years, in January, the governor will come back with his proposal again to say what, the amount that he wants to fund it. And then in the May revise, he'll come back again and say again what he wants.
All right.
And, you know, he'll revise it depending on what the state revenues look like, and then the legislature will either support him or not.
So is it safe to say that we actually don't know then? Well, we'll know soon, because they don't get paid unless they, until they pass the budget.
Right, we'll know very soon.
So then, if it's less, these numbers will change.
That is correct.
We might be having even more, actually strategic and deficit going on, right? But I guess what I'm asking is, next year, we're going to be asked to pass a budget again.
Mm-hmm.
Again, before they tell us how much we have.
I just wanted to put this out there. I don't want to keep seeing that deficit in the out year.
No, I don't either.
So there's some way that we can adjust it and show it differently? Because even though I understand, and a lot of us understand, maybe someone watching right now might not understand, they might just see that parentheses and see that we're deficit spending, and they don't, you know, they don't understand all the intricate detail.
It's also, I think it's important, though, that people see that we are, because other people, particularly down here, our teachers, are very aware that we have an excessive surplus. And we also want people to know that we're strategically using that surplus. I mean, that is important.
But this doesn't, this more shows, this looks more like we're just deficit spending. It doesn't really clearly show we're strategically using our reserves, even though we can look down there at the bottom.
Those are two ways of describing the same thing.
What people are going to look at is at the top.
Right.
So, and that's what I look at first, too.
But what it boils down to is that we're receiving a certain amount, and then we're planning on spending a certain amount. And really, the only year that you're, you're going to be approving is this year.
All right, so that's what I just wanted to make crystal clear.
You're not approving these years.
All right.
These years are just to?
Our conservative estimate.
So that you can say, is this something we can sustain? And with the information that's a part of it, you know, that you're getting, it's only this year you're approving.
But, okay, even though we're approving this year, we're showing the county.
Right.
That we can reach our goals on what's going to be the next year.
Yeah, I understand all that. What I'm just reiterating is that we're showing it down, you know, our fund balance is going down, just bottom line.
We could take off?
That's what we're showing everyone right now. We're showing the county, eventually we're showing the people in the audience and ourselves.
Okay, then we could put an asterisk. And on the bottom, we could say, we're using our reserve funds, and it'll be replaced.
That's not really my whole point, but?
Well, bringing our reserve down to the, to a more appropriate level.
So this is the benefit of having a reserve at the level we have it.
Right.
We're capped at 6%. There's no way that we could even do that at all. I mean, there's no way that we'd be bringing back what we're bringing back.
That could change, too. That's true.
I mean, I think that, you know, should that proposal go forth, the whole game's going to change, because there may need to be cuts.
That's true.
Let's not forget the years, which was only the other year, where we were getting 78 cents on the dollar.
Mm-hmm.
Seventy, that's more than 20% of our monies. Yeah, and to not be able to, for instance, have a reserve more than 6%, how would we live with that?
Right. Well, I just, I guess my point is it's important for people to see how fast the money can go.
Right. And if you look back in the past, the state did not anticipate this, the nosedive that we took, and that we would, we're going to be having a 22% reduction in our funding to be funded at 78%. They were projecting up, up, up. They're still projecting up, up, up.
That's true.
We're going like, I don't want to project up. I want it to project up. That way, if it doesn't go up, and if it, if it does kind of fall flat, that we're in a position that we understand where we are, and what we may or may not have to do. I would rather come back to you and say, okay, the governor has approved the higher amount. You know what? Come January, and the governor comes and he says, okay, yeah, we're going to do 30%. Then when I start presenting to you, I'll be having that 30%.
Recognize.
It'll be there.
And we'll start thinking about how to use it.
All right, thanks very much.
Are people reasonably happy? Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Kessler.
You're welcome.
Okay, down to section five, classified personnel. We have a retirement request from Lillian J. Wong.
Make a motion to approve the retirement request from Lillian Wong, food service assistant at Marjorie Tobias School, effective June 22, 2014, and that an appropriate resolution be prepared, commending her for her many years of service with the district.
Thank you. We have a second for Mr. Waters. All those in favor?
Aye.
And no opposition? Congratulations to Ms. Wong on retirement. And this actually brings us down here to our board policies.
Do we have, she doesn't want to talk first, and they sit on the board with this?
I'm not sure. Did we still have comments that needed to be?
We could.
Donna Hurt had a message which I will deliver.
Okay. We can, if you're willing, you're going to stick to the end?
Yeah.
So we'll let you do it in the appropriate time slot, then? Yeah. Were there questions, comments, inquiries on the board policies?
Yes.
So I think there was a question at the last board meeting about medication and monitoring of health conditions, about who does this and who's trained. All the staff that has contact with students are trained in a student's condition. The people who do the training are nurses, or sometimes the LVNs who come around during the lunchtime. But the reason this policy is up for updating is because the law's changed about who can administer and who can monitor conditions, and it was, it's now being open to anyone on the staff who can volunteer to do it. So that's why it's up for an update, not any other.
Who are trained.
Yeah, they're trained by an instructor.
They'll be trained.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And I think we kind of really discussed that the last time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so on board policy 3551A? We're talking about the food service?
Yes.
Okay, so it says here that the food services shall be a self-supporting nonprofit. Is that what it's, we consider our program to be nonprofit?
It's considered nonprofit in the sense that the money gets put back into the operations of the program in the district. So like, we don't pay shareholders or anything like that. It just gets put back into the program, or into the district. Is that accurate?
It stays in the food service program, but we're only allowed to have a certain amount.
Of money.
And the thing is, is that we do want to be able to maintain our facilities, and so it would be, it would go back into that. But we wouldn't be able to have a super high reserve in that and continue to charge the students. If we're able to make so much money, we should be able to reduce the fees to the students. But what we want to do is be able to make enough money to be able to pay for the repairs, the new equipment, and not have to take from the general fund to do that.
Because I know there's that certain amount of money you can only carry over so much.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that was a question I had on that one. And then another one over here, food services again, because it says cafeteria funds shall be used only for those expenditures authorized by the board as necessary for the operation of school cafeterias, blah, blah, blah. Okay, and so, just want to make sure, is there, is everything that we're using for here for the cafeteria only?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, do we still do that catering thing, and people pay us? Do we still do lunches for other places?
The catering goes into, the funds from the catering goes into the food service program.
Okay, so is that, that's okay under the nonprofit? That's what I wanted to make sure. We're doing okay on that? Is the right thing to do? To get paid, to get paid?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so I want to make sure, because, got to ask those questions.
We don't want the food service program to be subsidizing other programs because of catering, you know, for catering for maybe an in-service of some sort. Food service program shouldn't be doing that. Because if it, if it's not charging any, because if it's not charging, then it should be not charging the students, not not charging for an in-service.
Okay. So on the same page, it says indirect costs charged to the food service program shall be based on either the district's prior year indirect cost rate at the statewide average approved. I won't read the whole thing, but, okay. So what are our indirect costs?
Indirect cost rate changes on a yearly basis, and there's a state average rate, which we cannot, if our indirect cost rate was 6%, and the state average rate was 4.5%, we could not do it higher than the 4.5%.
But what is it for? What is our indirect cost used for?
It covers, covers things like our administration, covers things like, that are not covered by the program directly. In other words, we have insurance for the whole school. We pay a lot for insurance, and the food service program, it covers the food service program too, our liability insurance.
But not for the whole district, just the program.
It only, their portion, see, that's, thank you. The indirect cost rate, it breaks it out per dollar that we spend.
Okay. Because several years ago, the indirect costs that they used in the district was to pay, like, rent for the central kitchen. But we own it. It was charges that were put in that?
Those are direct costs.
Might not have, should have been done that way. So I'm just saying, it's, I just need to know, when we look at the budget for the cafeteria, what is our indirect costs?
It's, okay, the, it's a rate that's determined by, within our financial statements. It's a calculation that's automatically done. We don't, we don't control that calculation. It goes up and down with the way expenditures are. Like, for instance, if our utilities went higher, or our insurance went higher, or if our administrators or custodians cost more, all of those get determined as an indirect cost rate. And it becomes an average amount for every dollar that the district spends. Like, if it's four and a half percent, for every dollar that the district spends to educate kids that has direct costs, there's this indirect cost that's associated with those.
So you keep saying administrators. What administrator are we talking about?
It's just an example.
Oh, no, but we don't pay for an administrator out of?
No, it's sort of like some of the, I think she sometimes, she uses administration as the administration of the business office, like paying the bills, the, you know, all of the charges that are associated with that, all of the accounting that's associated with that, all of, so there's a rate that is an average rate, and it is, it is charged on the direct expenses of the program. So if the program spends $1,000, there's four and a half percent is charged as indirect costs. It's an average rate, and it's not necessarily tied to anything in particular. It's just goes to the general operations of the school district, and primarily sort of overall administration.
Yeah, it's a common practice.
And the light, make sure the lights are on.
Make it, so we don't have to ask so many questions. Maybe I could get a copy of what the latest one is, so I can see where it is.
Indirect cost rate? Sure, I can give you that. It's online.
Yeah, it is.
You know, on the state website.
Online is?
But I can get it for you.
Get it for me?
Sure, not a problem.
Okay, and then the, then it says, any, on the next page, it says, "Any contract for consulting services shall not result in the supervision of food service classified staff by the management consultant." So could you just explain what all this is? Is this happening?
3551E.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. It might help them to know exactly where you were.
I just said the next page, John. So, um? Kind of explain what this is really about.
Okay, Jeff, who's working for Aramark, cannot be the direct supervisor of our staff.
Ah.
Now, I can, I'm the supervisor of, for instance, the central kitchen staff, and I can direct them to follow his direction, but he is not, he cannot evaluate them in a sense.
Okay, I got it.
Just want to make sure, it was kind of like, eh, so, because there's only a couple more, and we'll be out of here, guys. I put a little clip, so I'd find them right away. Okay, so, didn't put a, didn't put a little asterisk. Oh, it's on the back page, next page. BP 4111B. So it's talking about this screening process. I just want to know why you took out ranked candidates? Why was that removed out of there?
Well, as mentioned, these policies are general policies, and they're always adopted to reflect district practices. And so the, this particular, I think it's referring to the?
Interview committees.
Interview committees, they don't necessarily rank candidates.
It's probably in here because at one time they did.
No, this is a general one. Nobody, they don't, they don't give us our own. This is, and you see in every policy, we strike out the parts that don't.
No, I meant, you said something about what we do in the district, but at one time they did that. So I was just wondering if that's just that we just took that out?
Yeah, we took it out. I think, and I'll look at it more carefully, I didn't know that we were going to discuss this, but I will look at it and investigate it. In the classified realm, the candidates are ranked.
Well, that's, we can't touch that.
Yeah, in the certificated realm, the panels often just recommend candidates to move on to the next level, and at least at the administrative level, the superintendent makes the ultimate decision.
Oh, yeah, right. Okay, well, anyway, we'll, can talk about that.
We don't want it to require them to rank it.
No, no, it doesn't.
We don't necessarily ask them.
Well, what it is, is with the two different committees, sometimes the one committee would just make a recommend, just say, just rank it how they felt it was, but it doesn't mean that the administration has to take it.
Right.
But it just gives another perspective of what they see.
Removing that line from the BP means that we're not obligated to have them do that. You know, it's giving ourselves room to have it simply present their top three candidates.
But also doesn't allow it to happen.
Oh, believe me, it happens.
This is on tape, I'm gonna remember. You said it happens.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I hear all about it.
AR five, one, two, three, C. It says the superintendent designated shall also provide a copy of the district's, uh, promotion retention policy. However, it's been scratched out shall and inserted as may. Is there a reason why it changed from shall to may?
We've done that on a lot of places because shell is, well.
Did you do it? Or you, you did it?
I mean, I, that's something that I also, I mean, I, I'm on the committee that reviewed these, so, you know, I can offer some input on.
Thank you.
Because I usually back those things that, because shell means you have to. And may gives us room to have a little bit of judgment on it.
So the whole paragraph is optional, um, there. And we've, we've, we have opted to.
It says optional there.
Yeah, it's optional and, and we've, we have opted to include it because it does reflect our practice. And, um, and many times, the, um, the policies and the whole process is communicated regularly to the, the parents and families. This, this policy is not user-friendly. It's five pages and we don't always give them the full, here's our policy, five pages of blah-bitty blah. Hope you understand it. But I do think that the intent of the policy is always communicated. But the actual policy may not be handed, um, to a parent. So that's why we changed it to may, um, because if a parent requests it or a parent wants it, we do provide it. It's not, it's not a secret.
Okay.
Oh, I just wanted to allocate some time for a letter to be read. Um, it's nine fifty-nine right now.
Well, I'm stopping now because I didn't, I don't have any more things. I have to still read the rest.
Okay.
We can still approve it as a first reading.
Are you willing to, to?
We can read it for a first reading, cause I can bring it back at the second reading.
Motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay.
And, and maybe I won't have any change, any questions on the next one, so.
Right. We do have, I've got one thing here on a board member report that I need to make. I did meet this morning with our auditor, um, gave me a general summary that we're about halfway through our audit process. And he wanted me to make sure that each of you had his contact information. If you have any questions about the process or anything that you feel should be specifically looked at, to, um, feel free to contact him. And that's, that's all I wanted to say on that. I don't think, did, nobody else had any committee meetings or reports? Then, very quickly, Ms. Dart, would you like to read this? And I'm sorry, I was, it was very confusing what she, I'm not sure when she was trying to say that.
Don't worry. Willing to dart eighty, thirty-two, sixty-seven. Um, when, when we were looking at the, uh, student achievement, uh, data, we wanted to say that if, if we wanna focus in on fourth grade, then we need to think about class size. Those are some large classes.
And it's the point where we make the jump to the larger classes. That's a very valid point.
And then Donna Hart, uh, said that she would, if, if people wanted to hear about smarter balance and how it went this year, that is the test, that if it were on the agenda, she would speak about experiences in it.
Okay.
If you wish. That's it. Thanks.
Yeah. Okay. At this point then, at ten, you wanted to say something?
No.
No, it was, it was, it was referred to, I'm gonna start reading the, the note from, uh, Hart. So at ten oh one PM, this meeting is adjourned.